It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, June 14th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. If you're very wonderful, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Public comments?
There's none, Your Honor.
No public comments?
No.
Okay. Okay, next item is the minutes. I believe we have them before us.
I do move to approve the minute here.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is the vendors list. Mr. Perez.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Thank you for having me. We have a copy of the vendors list in front of you. We've got five new vendors, and we review them as soon as we can.
I want to approve.
Second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And claims, Mr. Perez.
Yes, again, you should have a copy of the claims in front of you. We review the claim names recommended.
We don't have a copy of the claim.
We don't have a copy of the claims.
Or this here.
Get out of the vendors list.
Huh?
For the vendors.
We weren't in last week.
They're not here.
I've got my copy.
You're gonna need a copy.
Yeah, are there, maybe make a copy.
Let me make a copy and then you come back.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come back to it. Okay, is there anyone from outside the county that needs to come to the court at this time? You're certainly welcome to stay if you want to, just give you all the courtesy. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, good morning. We're from the Texas Department of State Health Services. We're number eight.
Okay.
If you don't mind, if we want to present.
No, go right ahead.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Yes. Good morning, first of all, thank you, Judge Commissioners. My name is Monica Espinoza. I'm with the Texas Department of State Health Services, and we're here to introduce Operation Lone Star again this year. And I have my coworker here.
Ms. Laura Flores.
And he's really been the one working the county for the COVID testing and the vaccinations. But first of all, Operation Lone Star, we're excited again, so we thank you guys for allowing us to come again to your county. We're excited this year because we have what's called RAM, the Remote Area Medical, coming in to provide dental and vision this year at the AC Magnet Elementary. I'm excited because I've been trying to get them for like 10 years since I've been here working with the state. They will provide free dental care, and not only just preventive services, but they'll do like extractions and fillings. And I know that's one of the services that the community has been asked for for many years now. Plus, they also have the vision care, which they will provide frames, and they'll do the glassware onsite free for our community as well. So I'm pretty excited for that. We're still in the planning aspect of it, and we're still trying to get volunteers. I know that I got a note from our nursing school here. So we're struggling right now with some volunteers, but we'll get it done like we do every year. So, pretty excited for that, and that's all we have for right now. Do you have anything to add?
No, nothing to add.
Any questions?
Dental, where does it go to cover, ma'am?
It's gonna cover, they're gonna do like, of course, their preventive services, which is your hygiene, fluoride, washings, plus they're gonna be doing extractions, and it's for children and adults. And they'll also be doing fillings. They're not gonna do major surgery, like do a root canal or a crown, but they'll do like most of the sought-out services for the community has been like extractions and fillings.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh huh. Any questions?
Yes, what are the dates?
The date is July 26th through the 30th. And I apologize, our flyer hasn't even been completed yet. We started planning in April barely for Operation Lone Star. And so this year, the state will have two sites in Willacy and Starr. So we're excited.
Where are the sites gonna be, ma'am?
So we have, in Hidalgo County, we have a PSJ High School, the Bears High School. We have, in Willacy County, right now, we're in the middle of that. I think it's gonna be at the Methodist Church in Raymondville.
Right here.
Here in AC Magnet Elementary. We've had it for many years there.
One of the things I had asked someone that I talked to
Uh huh.
Is that the possibility of having a van or something where they can go to, let's say, Altonito La Grúa and to Roma, you know, because some of those people that live out there, it might be a little difficult for them to get over here.
Sure.
Even if it's for a day or two, you know, just so they can get some kind of service in that, in those areas, you know, we'll try and get as many people as we can to come over here.
Uh huh.
But if you all could help us with that.
A mobile, like a mobile unit or something like that?
Right, yeah, that would go a long way.
I know that the state doesn't have a mobile unit anymore. We used to back it before I came into state. I know that they had a mobile unit and they would do that.
Yeah, they did it one year.
Yeah, I could ask and see if anybody else has a mobile unit that they can do that. I'm sure that they can, I'm sure we can do that, but that's not up to me, actually, it's higher ups, so I can request that, sir.
Okay, yeah, if you would, because I think that would help our outline.
Yeah, especially the colonias and all the underserved. And that's what we're here for, Operation Lone Star is for the underserved and uninsured, but we do have some that fall under the cracks, unfortunately. We will try and work with the transportation services too, because I know that we have pickup and drop off points, so we'll definitely work on that, Judge.
Yeah, we do have Valley Metro.
Right.
That you all can use.
Yeah, and we worked with them in the past where they pick up and drop off. Any other questions, Commissioners? Judge?
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
We're from the local businesses. This is your department. Is there a picture of anything? Sorry.
Yes, this is item nine, so we'll go ahead and move to.
Yes, item nine.
I'm sorry?
Yes, it's item nine.
Okay, the elder abuse protection.
Proclamation, yes.
Okay.
Good morning, my name is Maribel Gonzalez. I'm a supervisor with Adult Protective Services. This here is my colleague, Anabella. First of all, I want to thank you, Judge, and all the Commissioners for helping us raise abuse awareness. Elder abuse can be physical, emotional, sexual, and financial. It also includes people that are being neglected and those that neglect themselves. Raising awareness and taking steps to prevent abuse in our community is everyone's business. At Adult Protective Services, we investigate abuse, neglect, and financial exploitation of adults 65 and older, as well as those 18-plus with a substantial disability. If you suspect abuse, neglect, or exploitation, report it. All reports are confidential, and our hotline is open 24/7. We ask that you call 1-800-252-5400, or report online at www.texasabushotline.org. Once again, thank you, and remember, elder abuse is everyone's business. So our motion here, Judge, is just to have the month of June declare Elder Abuse Prevention Month.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Before that, ma'am, let's say somebody reports an abuse for elderly. Who responds to that, to that call? I mean, who comes in, the law enforcement or whatever?
Well, we get our reports in Austin. All reports are kept confidential, the reporter's identity, and then depending on the area, they're sent to a local office, and we have one of our investigators make contact. Now, if it rises to the level of criminal conduct or suspected criminal conduct, we then refer and work with our local law enforcement agencies, depending on who has jurisdiction for the area.
You know, because I know for a fact, and I've brought it up several times here, that we have elderly abuse and child abuse. We call the people or the law enforcement, nothing that they're ever doing that. So, I mean, I'm sorry to tell you, man, we, there's a case, as a matter of fact, I think there's one that just happened a couple of days ago, you know? They call in and nobody shows up, nobody answers, and nobody does anything.
Yeah, well, we do investigate all reports received. Now, whether action is taken or not depends on the nature of the investigation, but we do encourage you that if you don't see any action or results that have taken place already, to call in and you referral. Although, like I said, it just depends on the nature. We work with adults, so it also has a lot to do with their rights and how we protect them as well.
Because I know our cases, I brought it here before the Commissioners hold, every time you got to make a presentation, same thing happens.
Well, what I can do is I
Reports call and nothing, nothing's done.
I'd be more than happy to leave you a business card, and if you have a question regarding a specific case, we'll help you to the best of our ability. Okay? Any?
Any other question? I do have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve.
Okay.
Before I call for the vote, I do want to thank you all for the services that you all give our citizens. And we always hear about child abuse, but we very seldom hear about elderly abuse, so we appreciate the work that you do in our community.
Thank you, Judge, very much appreciated.
Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Yeah.
Don't even say "I'm presented" or "I'm..."
If I can help everybody, kind of, I can. And I think we leave you have a proclamation. This is just a...
I'm sorry, Mr. [inaudible].
[inaudible]
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 Any other question?
I do have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve.
Okay.
Before I call for the vote, I do want to thank you all for the services that you all give our citizens. And we always hear about child abuse, but we very seldom hear about elderly abuse, so we appreciate the work that you do in our community.
Thank you, Judge, very much appreciated.
Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Yeah. [inaudible]
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 Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Judges, thank you. Commissioners, thank you so much.
Any one else that is coming for the court? Yes, sir.
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias.
Ah, unos diez minutos no más los voy a quitar de tiempo. Es que tenemos un problema de la colonia que tenemos, de una calle que se ha encerrado.
Okay, mira, necesita registrarse.
La puntuación.
Es que es la primera que venimos.
Está bien.
I'm sorry.
[inaudible]
Sí, de ahí está, vuelvemos a...
Estamos.
Nada más poner su información, su nombre y...
Y se lo vemos.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and continue with our agenda. Under reports, Gas Department.
Oh, Judge, you want to go back to six? I think everybody has copies of the...
Oh, yes. Yeah, let's do that, thank you. Let's go back to item number six. This is a presentation of claims. Mr. Perez?
Yes, so now you should have...
Yes, sir.
That we review the claims and that we recommend that we...
No, just move on.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Now we go with the gas report.
Your Honor and Commissioners, the report for the Gas Department is before you. Gas Department is doing very well, it's got good revenues, and they've been working on the lines that are required by the state, replacement of lines. So this department is doing very well. You should have that financial report before you.
Any questions on the gas report? Thank you. Next is the transfer station.
Your Honor, before you, you also have the report for the transfer station. We did well this past month. We have a surplus of 9,613.55. Overall, this department is also doing well. Mr. Perez, you were gonna let them know on the situation last time, when we were in the negative, but we weren't? Okay, anyway...
What was that, I'm sorry?
Couple of, a couple of reports before, well, the last one, maybe the month before, I had reported that we had a negative deficit year-to-date, or we were missing some funds that had come in, or...
Yeah. It was like 60-some thousand negative, and I knew we weren't.
Those revenues were not in the report yet, and so we've now included those in excess, whatever it is.
Where were they?
That would be another thing.
Where were they, not in the report?
I don't know if it had been misclassified, it had been deposited, and we put it into the general fund, but it wasn't in.
Was this a grant money, or?
Yes.
Any other question? I'm sorry.
Like I said, we have a surplus this month of 9,613.55. This department is doing well, like I said, and I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Commissioner Science and Commissioner Perez for helping us out with their equipment. You know, the road gets really bad, especially with this rain. You know, the roads erode, and they do, the state expects us to maintain that road, and I'd like to thank both of you Commissioners. That's all I have at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, any questions for the transfer station? If not, Texas is, sir.
Good morning, Judge, good morning Commissioners. This is my report for the month of May 2021, and you should have it in front of you. The total county worth collections for May 2021 were 527,807 with 78 cents. In May of 2020, they were 689,095 with 59 cents. There was a total collection of 161,287 with 81 cents. Our total current collections for Starr County entities were 149,247 with 33 cents. Current collections for the month of May were 251,051 dollars with 8 cents. There was a total current collections of 101,807 with 75 cents, less than last year. Our total delinquent collections for May 21, just for Starr County, were 182,948 with 98 cents. Total delinquent collections in May of 2020 were 176,823 with 62 cents. There was a total delinquent collection of 6,125 with 36 cents, more than last year. As of May 31st, the tax office has collected 98% of the projected current collections. Projected current remaining are 350,398 with 98 cents. Also, the tax office has collected 76% of the delinquent collections. Projected delinquent collections remaining are 626,794 with 70 cents. That is my report for the month of May. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
County Clerk, Mr. Williams.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. You should have the bank deposit summary report in front of you for the month of May for the County Clerk's office. Just gonna highlight a couple of things here. The total amount due to the Treasury is 34,118.50, and that's what everything included. So we had a total of 2,637 filings. What I want you to look at is what comes into the County Clerk, that's what comes into our general fund. We had 707 new filings for a total of 17,147.50, so we're averaging about 600, 650 new filings every month. So even though we're in a pandemic, it's been steadily increasing. What I wanted to let you guys know is that in a couple of months, we will be publicizing through the different media outlets on the renewals for the brandings that the state's gonna require now, every 10 years, starting September of this year through February of 2022. Anybody that has a brand registered in the county will have to re-register it. So we will see an increase in registrations coming through for that, and anybody that is new will have to do that again. And we'll do it from here on out every 10 years, starting this year.
How much does the registration cost for a brand?
It's gonna be, it went up $10. We approved this last year, so we're at, I believe it's $24 to register the brand. And if you pay with a credit card, because we don't take cash, we charge an extra dollar, or you can do a money order, but it's $24 is what we charge. So we're telling the customers, I mean, we can't deny anybody for registering right now, but we're saying, you register right now, you're still gonna have to register again in September. We're just working on the logistics with the state and how we're gonna do this, if we're gonna do it through electronic filing, or we're gonna just kind of do it manually like we've been doing it before.
Mr. Williams, you said that what comes into the county is the County Clerk, the 707 filings.
Yes, sir.
What about the other monies? Do we get a percent of that?
So, if you look at the records, well, also, Judge, the copies is also going in straight into the general, that's a thousand, I believe 1,800? I have my glasses with me. What we keep in our two different accounts, which is the records archive and the records management, is the one that we keep in for our account, where we're charging those $5 that we keep, but everything else goes to the state.
Marriage license, all that, that goes to the state?
That goes to the state. So basically, what the county's keeping is those 17,000. So it's around that. You know, we'll see some more stuff coming up, as you've seen, businesses are coming up now here within the city and within the city of Roma, so we're seeing all those filings coming in. We're seeing new subdivisions coming in. I believe just in this last month, I signed like four different plaits, commercial plaits that are coming into our community. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff's Department?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The projected revenues for the month of May, for the month of May, we're showing $1,500 for AUSA Solutions, that's the inmate telephone system. Transport services for the US Marshal, 5,850. Medical care, $82. Marshal services, 65,230. Hidalgo County Sheriff's Office, 192,280. For total projected revenues, we're 269,942,000. The count for June 1st was, we had 40 federal inmates, 103 Hidalgo inmates, and 109 state inmates, so a total of 252 of our capacity of 275. The average for the month was 38 federal, 160 Hidalgo inmates. The difference between May 2020 to May 2021 was a difference, increase of 115,894 due to the cutting back of the population to jail last year. So that's an increase of 75%. Year-to-date, projected revenues are $2,292,532, and an increase of revenues from last year, So that puts us, amount collected, more or less at 84.91% of the projected 2.7 million.
Any questions or comments? I do want to thank you for the work that you all have been doing at the state.
Thank you, Your Honor.
If we continue at this pace, we'll end up with about 500,000 to 600,000 more than budget, which is gonna help out a lot.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor.
So thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Commissioners.
The Starr County Bridge this month went down from last month. We went down 30,000, but if you guys can see, since the start of the fiscal year, we were very, very in the low numbers. Now it's starting to pick up, I think due to the pandemic, that everything's going back to normal. I do also know, because I spoke to the Port Director, Mr. Guerra, and he did say that they're gonna open up the bridge for Mexican nationals in June, if I'm not mistaken, '21. So that's what they're saying, let's hope they don't change it. If that does happen, then we'll probably have a little bit more revenue and more positive things for our bridge. We show an increase of 38,115,050 for this month. We show an increase of 12,207 on collections for the month of May compared to the month of April 2021. And that's about it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you.
The average for the month was 38 federal, 160 Hidalgo inmates. The difference between May 2020 to May 2021 was a difference, increase of 115,894 due to the cutting back of the population to jail last year. So that's an increase of 75%. Year-to-date, projected revenues are $2,292,532. And an increase of revenues from last year, $327,175. So that puts us, amount collected, more or less at 84.91% of the projected 2.7 million.
Any questions or comments? I do want to thank you for the work that you all have been doing at the state. If we continue at this pace, we'll end up with about 500 to 600,000 more than Budge did, which is going to help out a lot.
Yes, sir. Thank your honor.
So thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Commissioners. The Starr County Bridge this month went down from last month. We went down 30,000. But if you guys can see, since the start of the fiscal year, we were very, very in the low numbers. Now it's starting to pick up, I think, due to the pandemic, that everything's going back to normal. I do also know, because I spoke to the Port Director, Mr. Guerra, and he did say that they're going to open up the bridge for Mexican nationals in June, if I'm not mistaken, '21. So that's what they're saying. Let's hope they don't change it. If that does happen, then we'll probably have a little bit more revenue and more positive thing for our bridge. We show an increase of $38,115,050 for this month. We show an increase of $12,207 on collections for the month of May compared to the month of April 2021. And that's about it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, hopefully, this is a trend that will continue.
Let's hope, Judge, that we really need our bridge to start picking up.
Any questions on the bridge? Thank you. Treasurer?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. You should have my report in front of you. This report is for the month of May 2021. If you could just follow along with me. The general fund, the ending balance for the general fund is at $5,278,293 with 48 cents. At this time last year, it was at $4,66,390 with 76 cents, for an increase of $1,211,902 with 72 cents. On the road and bridge, the ending balance is at $1,282,873 with 29 cents. At this time last year, 2020, the balance was at $1,107,678 with 62 cents, for a difference of $185,194 with 67 cents. For the enterprise funds, the ending balance was at $502,292 with 4 cents. At this time last year, it was at $771,929 with 89 cents, for a negative difference of $271,131 with 79 cents. For the Drainage District, the ending balance was at $394,911.36. At this time last year, it was at $1,238,319 with 4 cents, for a negative difference of $843,607 with 68 cents less than last year. Which brings the grand total ending balance is at $7,468,870 with 17 cents. As compared to last year, it was, last year, it was at $7,184,318 with 31 cents, for an increase of $282,557 with 92 cents, more so than last year. Okay.
Mr. Rosales, one question on the Drainage District?
Yes.
Why even negative? We haven't taken?
Yes, we opened, I believe, we opened three CDs.
So it's just money that moved to another area?
Yes, but it's still there. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is that it? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Again, good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the summary report for the month of May 2021. You should have that report in front of you. On page one, Part One reflects the reconciled balances of, one, the general fund at $5,47,693.35, the road and bridge fund at $1,170,736.50, and the payroll clearing fund at $1,214,282.56. Part Two reflects the expenditure report for the general fund as of May 30, 2021, as a percentage of the year elapsed. As of May 31, 2021, 243 days, or 66.58% is elapsed. In summary, the general fund amount expended year-to-date is $11,989,952, or 62.66% slightly below the 66.58. Breakdown of several departments are reflected at the bottom of Page One and continue through Page Two. The departments that are exceeding the 66.58% are reflected in bold. On Page Three, Part Three reflects the expenditure report for the road and bridge fund as of May 31, 2021. In summary, the road and bridge fund amount expended year-to-date is $3,494,806, or 56.98%, which again is below the 66.58. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers of some of the departments within the road and bridge consolidated fund. The remainder of Page Three and continue through Page Four, we have the year-to-date summary of the revenue reports for the general fund and the road and bridge fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are $14,304,489, or 74.75%, and $5,535,946, or 90.25%, respectively. Page Five reflects the summary of revenues and expenses for the enterprise funds as of May 31, 2021. International Bridge reflects revenues of $1,145,970, with expenditures of $945,233, or an excess of $200,737. The Gas Operating System reflects year-to-date revenues of $716,966, with expenditures of $559,533, an excess of $157,433. And finally, the Solid Waste Transfer Station reflects year-to-date revenues of $929,374, with expenditures of $928,636, which is an excess of 738. Rena alluded to an excess of, what was it, 9,000 or something like that for the month? This is year-to-date, so we were at a deficit, now we're at an excess.
9,000?
This is cumulative year-to-date, yeah. So we're in the positive now. Finally, Page Six reflects the summary of the debt owed as of May 31, 2021, and that total balance is $1,605,159. And that's the end of the report. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Okay. If it's clear with the court, I'll go back to the public comments, and this is Mr. Lopez. And this is a matter of street closure.
Tocando una calle, eso que se cerró en la Victoria, en la Rincón. Este, hemos tenido problemas, ya tengo tres semanas sonando puertas y nadie nos pone caso. Ya he hablado con mister Garcia también. No sé qué mandó cerrar la calle. Entran los voces, ya no entran voces. Cada momento una volancia, no se pudo dar la vuelta, se meten entre los solares, darse la vuelta. Los que rojan ramas también el condado, andándose la vuelta quitando bloques para darse la vuelta para atrás, una calle muy chiquita, son 26 pies, que una señora decidió cerrar, junto con unos solares, que están del 88 abiertos. So, ya estamos, amolados porque nadie entra ahí. Lo único que entra es el correo porque el de la basura, se va, se viene para atrás y se va para atrás. Mister Canales dijo que no era problema de uno, yo no sé si se han puesto quejas, alguien. Mister Garcia le la pone él también, con Fidenso Salinas.
Esa calle que está ahí, esa calle que está ahí, hay vivia, el último señor que estaba vivia ahí, aún está, cuando comenzaron a cerrar, ese ya puso como 100 quejas o más, que veía a la gente ahí, le patinaban y que fue y que vino y que pagué y que pagué, eso nomás refería a la policía. Fue el contestable, fue el departamento de Cherife, y que nunca hicieron nada. Dije, mire, dije, yo no soy el dueño de solares, ese no sé quién es, dije. Y ahí en otra punta, ahí se parqueaba una trailer. Se parqueaba ya en la otra punta, ¿dónde me lo vio usted?
En la mitad de la calle 80, en la mitad de la calle de la colonia.
En la mitad?
Sí.
Okay. Pero ahí había se parca una trailer. Este, y el señor estaba queje, sí queje, sí queje, y que no sabían quiénes eran los solares. Y pues cómo no tiene que haber dueños, dije, no, no, no puede ser nomás solares. Hasta que agarré un día específico yo y chequé, ahí es los dueños de esos solares. Había una señora González, yo tengo unos papeles y le hablé a la señora, mire señora, aquí está estos documentos, estos solares, uno es de usted y otro de otra señora, digo, yo soy hoy mi esposo, okay? Y entonces, ¿qué es el problema? Por qué usted, ese señor, se está quejando? ¿Por qué no le vendió usted al señor ese que se está quejando? Para que se le caa el problema? Digo, bueno, que fui a la corte, que no lo puedo vender porque no es mío. Aquí está el documento. El problema es que cuando ustedes les vendieron ahí, les vendieron los lugares medidos, están medidos.
Traigo aquí del 90 un plano que tiene.
Está archivada la colonia.
En Ciudadano, en Condado. Estamos en Condado, y si hubo Fidenso Salinas en Condado ahí.
No, no, que sí está archivada la colonia.
Judge, Commissioners, we did speak. I was going to get back to him, I was all last week in the conference, with this whole meeting with the governor. What's going on is basically, at the end of the filed, the recorded subdivision, the recorded subdivision, at the very end, there was an alleyway, and then some empty lots. Apparently, one of the individuals at the very end of the lot decided to fence up, and maybe adverse possession, I don't know. But that's what they've done, they fenced it. And they're complaining, and what I told them cursory, I was going to sit down and talk to the Commissioner, that ultimately, if that wasn't a county road, which I have not been able to ascertain then, it would be up to the Commissioner to decide whether or not to open that county road, if it was in fact.
It's been open for a long time, okay? And the paperwork she had, they had no meets and bounds. It didn't say lot three, or lot four, lot one, or lot, nothing. Just sold two lots, okay? So I sent them over to Clark Title, and they checked there. And the lady said, we bought the lot here next to this lady, and my husband bought the other one, so on and so forth, so on and so forth. But there were no meets and bounds. So what Clark Title told them, you know, go ahead and hire a surveyor to measure those lots, so they can be identified, they're not even a tax row. They had not paid taxes for more than 20 years. They're not in the tax row. So they went in and got the measurements, and then they made the warranty deeds based on the survey, and they also decided a corrected deed.
So what you're saying, basically, Commissioner, is that that alley was not even an alley, it was never supposed to have?
It was an open space. There was nothing there. And they wanted for me to pay, I said, how can I pay something that I belong to the county?
My question to all this, Mr. Canales, is the plat that they have, whether it's recorded or not, shows a 20-foot, 26-foot street, going from one street to the other. Now, if they sold by meets and bounds, by plat, by lot and block, whatever, however they sold, if the sale was hinged on that street being there, and then Mr. Solis wants to change it later on, every landowner that has bought must sign off on the corrected sale.
Well, you're absolutely correct in regard to the actual property sale, whatever whatnot. By looking at the issue, the issue that they're bringing forward is that a county road is being blocked. That's what they're, ultimately, that comes to the Commissioner, as we discussed in the Commissioner's Court, whether the county wants to continue to maintain that road or abandon it. That's an issue for the Commissioner's Court to consider at a later point.
Well.
I'm not making any opinion as.
You mentioned something about adverse possession, and correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that you cannot adverse possess against the county.
That's correct.
So even if they fenced it or whatever, it's still not theirs.
Correct.
They can't charge adverse possession, they just fenced it, John. And they just fenced it, because just up to a few months ago, they got their warranty, actually warranted it and gave them the meets and bounds.
I'm not making any claim, Judge, as a lot of this information I was not privy to.
Can you explore that and see? You know, personally, I don't like to give a land that belongs to the county. I don't care where, who, or anything, because we're always looking for property. But explore it and see if.
And talk to the people that owns those lots, you know.
Well, ultimately, like I said, I'm looking out for you all. You know, is this a county road or not? That's number one. Is it a county road? If it is in fact a county road, does the Commissioner want to maintain it? Does he want to actually maintain it and improve, or does the Commissioner's Court want to do that? Those are the two issues that I'm looking at, as to whether they actually purchased it, didn't purchase it, if it was right, if it was wrong. I'm not really very overly concerned with that aspect of it. A lot of this information I was not privy to. Him and his wife, they came over, they spoke to me, just basically regarding a county road that was closed. And that's how, that's perspective that I'm looking at.
Okay, I think you.
Corre una pipa de agua de la ciudad de la Grúia, pegado a la casa, la que cerró la calle, son 26 pies que corre y polaría su casa la pipa de agua. La cierran, cómo se ha metido el condado para reparar la pipa un día.
And that's one of the issues that they're very concerned about, everybody else.
No, sir, no, sir, yo tengo un niño de 16, mi padre de tercera edad entró en la volancia, no se está andando la vuelta porque todos, es una calle muy chiquita, y todos están dando la vuelta, el condado fue el ranto ramas, que lo hicieron, levantaron los bloques, que no se andan la vuelta, no solares, se andan la vuelta y se fueron. El boya no entra.
And the county is not filing complaints, the school district is not filing complaints, the emergency management services are not filing complaints. The only individuals is that are complaining, they're on behalf of all these other services. No services have been neglected. When schools start and buses start rolling, will there be complaints? I don't know. I don't know. It's very premature. But ultimately, what it comes down from my perspective, is, is that a county road? Number one. Is that a county road? Number two, is the Commissioner or the Commissioner's Court wishing to maintain that road? Those are the two issues.
You know, what Commissioner Garcia mentioned, that it's been open for a long time.
It's open a hundred and something feet, tal.
70, 70, son 50, no 26.
So couldn't we say it's a public road through prescription or usage?
Sure. Basically, that would be what I'm hoping.
Well, mira, lo que vamos a hacer, Mr. Lopez, es que el fiscal va a ver la legalidad que hay en esta situación. Si es camino que sea del condado, entonces la corte va a determinar si quiere abrirlo o cerrarlo, o lo que quiera. Pero ahorita lo que tenemos que primero, que todo determinar, es si es un camino público o no lo es. Y es lo que vamos a hacer.
Lo mejor que podemos hacer es buscarlos, yo tenía el número, no sé si lo tendrán ahí, a la dueña, y vinieron los hijos de la dueña. No vinieron a hablar, pero no sé si estuvieron ahí, dije, pues necesitan arreglar este papeleo, porque ese señor que está ahí, todos los días está habla y habla y habla y habla.
¿Cómo se llama la señora?
Eva García.
Eva García y Javier García. Sí, son los días que todos ellos hablan, el señor son de la tercera edad también. Eva tiene salida para las dos calles, la Rincón y la Sanse. El problema es que no entra la volancia, yo no estoy peleando solares, estoy peleando la calle. Son una colonia de la Rincón, casi todos son de la tercera edad. Ahorita la volancia no entra, tiene un señor de tercera edad, tiene una niña chiquita, tiene que dejarla, son tres semanas ya que se acaba la escuela, el boya no entra, como dice Mister Canales, no hay queja. ¿Por qué no queja? La past driver vive atrás de la colonia, no sé si tiene que ver algo con eso, no sé.
One thing, and again, this is just a thought, el plat que yo vi, si recuerdo correcto, it had the street and then a lot, and the street in the middle. Maybe, you know, if the lady says, well, I want to make my lot bigger, que nos dé la calle at the far end, where it wouldn't be split her property in two.
Hay un poste de la luz, or there's no way.
No, pero eso se puede mover.
Talk to them, a si caso, dije, está este, pues muéstrelo para acá, en vez de dejar pedacitos ahí.
I feel we need to open it.
Sí, no, Mister Canales, ya está el mapa, usted también, este es un mapa de los 90 cuando compramos ahí.
It's a very weird design, the rest of that alley at the end, and so we have the very end since before.
Yeah, a lot of them. Some developers do that, but si el que está enseguida quiere develop, now they need to buy his property, and he can sell it just as.
Yo trato de conseguir a la señora otra vez, para que no.
No tenemos los nombres de las personas, tenemos los nombres de los solares, nomás que ya pega las taxes, si no, ahí te le apone una dirección, no tiene nada.
Ya, eso ya se arregló, porque yo saqué los archivos de los siete días, lo que pasaba es que no se los midieron, le vendieron esto, no decían si estaba de aquel lado, de este lado, o en esta punta. Y ellas dijeron que ellos compraron ahí.
Muchas gracias, señor. Yo tengo ahí más de 30 años, no me tratan mal, entonces si me conozcan, yo fui de los que les obligué a que nos den grabar a toda la colonia para cantar las voces de la escuela. Y estoy agradecido porque la colonia está progresada, está pega, está, tiene todos los servicios, verdad? Gracias a ustedes y a toda la condado. No, no, de que somos, por favor, es todo lo que le pido.
Como les estoy, mire, yo estoy, para eso me tiene, pero el señor dice que está todos los días en la mañana, y que no vino el policía, y que me echaron todas las pies, y que me quedaron la ventana, y que quiere que haga yo.
El señor es el último que hay, tengo otra vecina ahí que también la conoces, se llama Esperanza.
Este, y yo consigui, le conseguí los papeles, y le hablé a la señora, mire señora, venga y reglas, son de usted, si usted dice que esos son los solares, son de usted, aquí están los papeles, que no puede estar desde 20 años porque no está archivado en la corte, en la presidencia.
Si no, yo le aseguro que el Commissioner, Mr. Lopez, lo que puedes, lo único es que necesitamos hacerlo.
Y es lo que, voy a hablar con ella, si nos da una queoría, es mejor, que junten los dos solares, y si no quiere, pues que lo pasa como dice.
Si hay que subir las taxes, como le dijo a la vecina, que le dé con ella, si hay que subir las taxes, que la suban, necesitamos esa vuelta, pero más el callejón. Es muy feo una colonia del 88 que la cierran nomás de un solo golpe.
Ese lote, a él le costó mucho dinero en grabarlo, todos, son como dos o tres mil lágrimas cuadrados, los 80 pies por 160, eso debe bien que él lo grabó, entonces, pues cómo se lo van a quitar, así nomás.
Pues sí, pero yo no más puedo hacer ciertas cosas, como tiene, le une a señora por un lado y su dueña por el otro.
Hay que seguir la ley como dicta, verdad?
Y este es el último paso que vamos a nosotros, porque ya sonamos muchas puertas y ya no hay nada que se.
No, si se puede hacer algo, arreglar algo, el fiscal y el Commissioner.
I think one thing you do, Judge, also is communicating with the school district, the buses, they're very concerned about buses, I can appreciate.
Yeah, and the ambulance, morning.
And the ambulance, those are the two key things that I think that if, if they are impeded, then, okay, if they're not impeded, it's kind of sort of a waste of time.
A ver si tengo el teléfono ahí de la señora, este, que me dé los de los hijos, porque parece que son los que andan encargados ahí.
Él encargó, Mister Garcia, porque no venimos a pelear, venimos a hablar nomás.
Yo nomás arreglé hasta que ese señor, a diario, a diario, y bien persona.
Yo lo entiendo.
Que quiere que haga, yo dije, pues ábrele a la ley, ya le hablé, que no sirven este y que no sirve.
Esa clase de gente, no tiene, aquí no votan, pero le hace mucho caso la ley a ellos, no sé por qué, por la tercera edad, porque no tienen ni para votar, lo que elige lo trae usted. Dicen, no, que votamos, estamos bien abajo, no sirvimos para nada. Ellos que no votan, pasa una moto, chota. Pasa un carro con un mueble rompido, chota. Es una señora muy terca, como dice Mister Garcia, es muy terca, pero ellos.
Pero no van, dicen, tengo una, por ejemplo, que quiere que haga, yo no soy policía.
Entra el limpieza ante Cherife, y entra en la ciudad, sí entra. Pero todos los días.
Me dije hacerlo, dije, esta señora, esos supuestamente son de usted, a ver qué va a ser.
También, pues ya como quiera, ya sabemos el problema, el fiscal lo va a explorar y luego juntarse con el Commissioner, y a ver qué podemos hacer para resolverlo.
Él encargó.
Muchas gracias.
Gracias.
Okay, moving on to item 10, is to discuss and take action on replacement of Starr County Health Authority. This was just, I threw this in, porque I guess at some point, we do need to discuss and explore that. Dr. Patrón has been more than gracious, you know, he still calls, and I still call him, and he's still there to help us, and maybe that's the reason I've been dragging my feet, because I know he's still there. Pero at some point, we need to be fair with him, and he wants to move on. So I guess what I wanted to do was maybe get ideas from you all as to who you think.
Okay, Your Honor, are we actually looking for a doctor or any?
It has to be a doctor.
You have to get a?
Yeah, and I've got the literature, I'll give it to you in a moment.
Anybody in mind, or?
You know, I'm open. What I had thought of was maybe putting a request out there, any doctor that's interested. For one, we don't pay, I mean, it's a token amount, so where other counties pay 100,000s, and, you know, we pay $500 a month. So that's one of, it really has to be a pro bono type doctor that wants to help us out. You know, I'm open to whoever you all suggest.
Well, I haven't contacted nobody, but you know, maybe it's time for us to get.
Yeah, I thought maybe asking anyone that's interested, and if we get no one, then maybe drafting one, I don't know.
Can a PA or nurse practitioner?
I have a doctor in Jersey, too.
No, no. It is very clear, it must be a medical doctor.
Medical doctor.
Yeah.